Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for December 19, 2017. If we could please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Luce?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Moko?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here. Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving ahead, item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, deletions? Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, staff will pull item 7A, the public hearing on vacation and right-of-way and grain easements.
7A off the agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. Others? Counselor Moko?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lewis. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead to consent business. Are there any changes, deletions, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Counselor Whiting?
I would ask that item 8A2 be moved to consent.
The monthly financial review. Counselor Lehman?
I'd like to remove 4A7 and possibly add 8C1, 8C2.
Let's start with here. There's been a request for 8A2, monthly financial review, to be added to consent.
I'm okay.
8A2 then by consensus be added. And then we have a request for 8C1 and 8C2. Is that correct? Okay. So there's more adds with nothing removed. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business as modified.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second by Counselor Lehman. Before we vote, we will read the amended consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for December 19th of 2017. 4A1 adopts resolutions number 7958, which accepts gifts and donations received from outside organizations. 4A2 approves the minutes of the December 5th, 2017 meeting. 4A3 approves tobacco licenses for 2018. 4A4 approves pawn shop business license renewals for 2018. 4A5 approves applications for taxi cab license for 2018. 4A6 approves off-sale Sunday liquor and tobacco license application for Southside Liquors. 4A8 approves the 2018 non-union pay plan, part-time temporary and seasonal pay plan, and the part-time firefighter pay plan. 4A9 adopts resolution number 7959, which establishes polling places for 2018. 4B1 authorizes the appropriate state officials to execute an electrical inspections contract for both 2018 and 2019. 4B2 adopts resolution number 7956, which approves an interim use permit amendment to allow temporary storage of 450 semi-trailers at Valley Fair. 4B3 approves the economic development specialist position job description. 4B4 authorizes a grant application to the MDOT Safe Routes to School Planning Assistance Grant Program. 4C1 declares miscellaneous property held by the police department as surplus property and authorizes their proper sale or disposal. 4C2 authorizes the renewal of the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. 4D1 authorizes the ordering of a feasibility report for the 2018 street reconstruction project, number CIP-TAC-18-TAC-003. 4D2 authorizes the issuance of building permits for the Windermere Development. 4D3 authorizes the execution of a highway easement and temporary construction easement on the tax forfeited property acquired by the city located along CSAH-83. The additions of 8A2 is the monthly financial review. And 8C1, which approves ordinance number 976, which amends ICE rental fees and charges for the 2018 city fee schedule. And finally, 8C2, which authorizes the appropriate staff to enter into an agreement with fund to raise to sell advertising be placed on the Zambonis of the Shakopee ICE arena.
The modified consent agenda, we have a motion and a second. It's been read into the public record. There'll be no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead then to item number five. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda, not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. Seeing none, we will move ahead. Business removed from consent.
Mayor, I took 4A7 off consent because in the past when this was brought up, I voted against it. I wanted the opportunity to be consistent and vote against it again.
All right, Mr. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 7952 approving the EDA special benefit levy of $350,000 pursuant to Minnesota statute 469.033 subdivision 6.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, Counselor Lehman?
As I stated in the past, I didn't support it then and I still don't support it. It's basically a line item tax on your property tax statements. Some of the funding is used for free loans to the downtown businesses that aren't repaid. We're basically taking money from residential properties to give to for-profit business properties to fix up their properties.
Okay.
I disagree. I just fundamentally disagree with that, so...
No, that's fine. And this item is revenue neutral. It used to be included in our general fund and now we're making it more transparent as a EDA levy. Mr. Reynolds, do you want to make a comment?
Well, that's the comment that I wanted to make, Mr. Mayor. This, we are not changing any numbers. All we're doing is taking it from the general fund where it's kind of hidden frankly. And we're breaking it out so people can look at it and understand exactly what we're doing. It is going to be used for the same purposes that it would have been used for if it was in the general fund. It is a budget-neutral change and any of the programs that are part of that are all controlled by city council policy.
Just one minute. Counselor Whiting?
You know, I echo what both the mayor and Mr. Reynolds said. It's the same process we've used. We've just changed the way it's looked at and it made it a little more transparent.
Counselor Lehman?
Just a couple of clarifications. The policies are actually controlled by the EDA, which happens to be the council body. The difference to me is that when it's in a general levy, we've got the opportunity to not do it as part of the general levy. We can also make the argument that the commercial taxes that are coming in in the general levy are the only dollars using to go back into the commercial. In this case, it's residential property also. And it's not something that can be easily controlled year to year. You're basically levying this dollar amount. It'll probably never go down but only go up. And it's a new, to me, it's a new tax, so...
Other discussion? Motion on the table in a second. More discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
I abstain.
You abstain?
There's some bugs that need to be worked out. I'm just, you know, it's somewhat there, not all the way.
Thank you. Motion passes three to one with one abstention. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then. 7A was off the agenda. 7B, public hearing for the annexation of 12495 Marystown Road. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to open a public hearing. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public hearing is open. Mr. Noble will present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. I state this as an application for annexation, property at 12495 Marystown Road. Property presently is located in Jackson Township. I'm going to go to a slide here where you can see the location. Property is approximately 10 acres in size. It's on the east side of Marystown Road and it's just south of a section of countryside subdivision. Single-family residential and to the north of that is 17th Avenue. Recently, the council saw an annexation of property just generally north and west of this location. What the property owners in this case are asking for annexation to bring this property into the city for development opportunities. Again, it's approximately 10 acres. Should the annexation go through, they would need to come back for reguiding and rezoning. And if that were to be approved, they'd also follow it up with a plat for a single-family residential. The application or the parcel is generally consistent with the recently approved orderly annexation agreement we have with Jackson Township. They have looked at this and they are fine with the city moving forward with the annexation of this. So staff's recommendation is to approve the annexation. The planning commission did review it and they unanimously recommended approval. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Questions of staff. Counselor Lehman?
Services are readily available to the site?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
You can see with the drawing that there are actually two streets that were developed that would create stubs to this subdivision, so utilities are there, just need to be extended into this piece. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Does the applicant or their representative here would like to make comment on this? Is this a public hearing? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Randy Kubish, 1221 East Fourth Avenue, Kubish Realty. I don't have any more input other than we are planning a single-family project and we think it'd be complimentary to the development to the north. So I'm here for questions.
Questions of the applicant? Questions of the applicant? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing in regard to this annexation. Any resident would like to come forward and make comment? This is a public hearing. Annexation property order wants to come into the city limits. Counselor Moko?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lehman. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 7960, a resolution annexing the property at 12495 Marystown Road into the City of Shakopee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead to 81A, approval of the 2017 property tax levy collectible in 2018. The 2018 budget, 2018 debt service cancellation specific to certain debt issuances. And Darren will present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, before you tonight, as the mayor mentioned, is the 2018 budget and property tax levy. Let me get my slide presentation going here. Just got a couple of slides for you tonight. The council's been through the budget here pretty regularly for the last couple of council meetings on that end of it and such. I just want to give you a brief overview of where we're at to this date. There hasn't been anything that's changed since our truth and taxation meeting from December 4th. So annually, the City of Shakopee adopts a budget and property tax levy for the upcoming year. Tonight is that final step in the budget process that began back in May with public input meetings followed by a series of council work sessions that we had. I believe we had work sessions in August and September and then November as well too, so... And then we had our truth and taxation public meeting at our last meeting on December 5th or 4th. I think it's, I believe it was the 5th, 14th from 19th, so... And that's where the budget was presented and the tax levy was presented and the public had their opportunity to comment on the budget at that time. This is the final year of a three-year transformational budget process that sets the stage to achieve the council's ultimate goals of low taxes, financial stability, and a stable tax rate. This new foundation will keep these goals in place for the foreseeable future. From an administration standpoint, the budget continues to be retooled in order to establish true financial or fiscal transparency, including defining our revenues, making sure that we've called them out like we did tonight with the EDA levy. Our tax abatements are called out within our revenues. And that we're also looking at our budgets from a variance standpoint. In the past, we've had some pretty significant positive variances. We've now cut those back and really are just budgeting on our needs and not necessarily for the unforeseen to happen and such like that. So as Mr. Reynolds mentioned a few weeks ago, the city has only the ability to control the items in our box. And really, that is the city budget and the tax levy. That's the only thing that the city can necessarily control, is that levy and that budget. We don't have the ability to address valuation. That's handled by the county. We don't have the ability to handle or to set the school districts' taxes or the county taxes or any of those other special taxing districts such as mosquito control, met council, et cetera, on that end of it and such. So it's really just us being able to control that levy. That's really what we can control within our budget. For the second consecutive year, Stafford is proposing a budget with no impact to residents absent any increases in property valuation. And as we've mentioned over the last several weeks, it's that property valuation piece of it that we don't necessarily, that we don't have control of. So if your property didn't increase in value or stayed basically flat, your taxes are probably going to be very flat this year, if not a small decline. The proposed budget actually decreases the city's tax rate from 38.521% down to 37.12%. That's on the city side of it. Even adding in that EDA levy, which is a separate levy, but still we want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples across all the levies that the city can have an effect on, that increases it to 37.877%, which is still below the 2017 taxes payable end of that. And that makes us, Shakopee continues to be one of the lowest taxed communities in the metro. So with that, staff is recommending final levy approval of $19,260,548, which is a reduction from the preliminary levy that was passed back in September of about $154,000. We're also recommending approval of the 2018 budget, which includes a revised and our final budget for 2017, and then a cancellation of some certain debt service levies as well too, where we have available fund balance in those funds so we can cancel some of that debt service levy. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you may have. And I know it was short and sweet on this end of it, but I know you've seen it.
Questions of staff? I just want to make sure that this, you had a slide here, I think, that for the budget overview, for the second consecutive year, staff is proposing a budget with no impact to residents absent of any increase in property value. I know my property went up in value and my taxes went up. But you're saying if everything just stayed the same?
Right, right. And the nice thing about it is that Shakopee did see, we saw expansion and growth. We saw new growth in our tax base. About 25% of our growth is accounted for with new growth. We had some property appreciations. We did see that a lot of properties increased in value after, especially on the residential side, that a lot of properties increased in value after being pretty stagnant the prior year. But we did have 25% new growth, so that's new tax capacity coming into the city. And that's very significant on the amount that we were able to budget on.
Mr. Reynolds?
And help me understand that, Mr. Nelson. So if we're growing, our pie grows. And what's the effect of that on an individual taxpayer?
So everything's been, staying the same. No changes in valuation. If our pie grows with new growth, individual's tax burden would decrease.
It'll decrease.
It'll decrease. Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Counselor Whiting?
Just another comment, and I know we've talked about it and I know the answer to this question, but my property value went up 10% and a lot of people blame the city for that. But actually, the county does all the assessment.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Whiting, the county handles the assessment process. And that's, it's kind of a long process, so looking at the valuation for your taxes that are for pay 18, that value was actually established from January 1st, 2017, which then is, looks back a little bit a year prior to that time. So it's, the valuation actually looks back, so it's not today's market values. So it isn't necessarily that, but it is, it looks back at a certain period of time.
Now, in the past, and I don't know, you may not know the answer to this, but the county would get to about every property and reevaluate that on a more stringent level about every three years. Is that still accurate?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Whiting, that's every five years they have to, every five years they're supposed to. They view certain portions of the city and they try to get in, or get to attempt to actually enter people's homes to assess them at that point, so...
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I've served on the board of review for valuation for many years with Terry Yost in the past. It's not actually the county. I mean, we like to say it's the county, but it's the assessor's office, which happens to be housed in the county, and the assessor's office works under the guidelines of the state of Minnesota. So yes, you're correct. They do have a formula where they have to compare individual properties to like properties that have sold on an open-market sale, not a short sale, and these types of things. Have the comparable type amenities, square footage. And dumb sales compared to that particular house are then used to calculate what the true market value of that property is. And they do like a percentage throughout the community, so that the end of five years, they've covered it 100%. So you might go five years without seeing that process, but you will see it on the 5th. And that way, it's fair across the board for everybody.
Good. Other questions of staff? If not, thank you, Darren, very much. How do we want to proceed? Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 7951, 7953, and 7954, approving the 2017 property tax levy, collectible in 2018, the 2018 debt service cancellation specific to certain debt issuances, and the 2018 budget.
Counselor Lehman? Counselor Moko?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion. In looking at this budget, the tax levy, I think city staff has done a phenomenal job here in our community. And to come with a pretty clean budget, again, tax rate going down. I think when we look at tax capacity is going up, which is a good thing. I know all our values moved around. We impact the city line. I can speak personally most of the, I feel, for my city taxes, of which I pay about $90 a month. I believe I get very good value for those taxes. I made that comment at our last meeting. All the benefits that come with that for $90 a month versus a utility bill or your cable bill or your telecommunications bill in your house, I find value in my city taxes. But that's my comment. Motion on the table, second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 8B1, envision Shakopee update and discussion. Michael or Eric?
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to kind of start off with a little bit of context here. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, we really wanted to do something different with this particular comprehensive plan. A lot of times, a comprehensive plan will be developed and frankly, it'll be sitting on a shelf until eight years down the line when you pull it out again because you know you have to update it. Our goal in this particular comprehensive plan process was to do something dramatically different. First of all, we wanted it to be easily understandable by everyone. Again, much like... Again, much like our budget document, some of the transformation we've done in that regards, if I hand you something in Spanish and you don't understand Spanish, it's not being transparent, so, you know, this, this ultimate document will be very transparent for everybody. But even more transformative, as opposed to a bunch of us sitting in a back room and deciding what we were going to bring forward as part of this plan, we started this process out by going to the public, and we spent the first three and a half to four months, and which is still going on, by the way, of, of, of going out in the community and basically saying, so, what's your idea about our future? So it's not a bunch of pointy heads sitting in the back room, it's actually people that are living here, working here, and making a determination as to what we should be doing with this community. So with that being said, I'm very excited at where this process is headed. Eric has been doing a, a great job, MKSK has been doing an excellent job in, in coordinating with us as a staff to, to bring this forward, and with that being said, we'll kick it off.
Welcome.
Thanks, Bill, and thank you, counsel, for having us here this evening. I'm Justin Goodwin, planner with MKSK. Happy to be back here in Shakopee, and I'm not sure who's responsible for, but thank you for holding off the snowy weather for us flying in. I think it'll hold out for the next day or so here. We have a brief set of slides to share with you this evening, just to give you an update of where we're at in the process, what we've been hearing from the community, and what we found from our initial analysis, and where the plan is headed as we move forward, and also building on some of the engagement that we've had with you through staff and through conversations with you as we've set out to undertake the, the planning process. So we want to give a little bit of an overview of the objectives of the plan, and a brief overview of some of the findings that we've come to at this point in the process, and then share with you what we're calling emerging themes, what are these big topics and issues that the community has identified or that we've identified through some of our investigation, and then where we're headed moving forward. So this, this plan is really founded on, on two building blocks. One is community input, it's understanding what the needs and the issues are of those who live or work or visit the community of Shakopee, and it's also through data analysis. It's us doing our due diligence and understanding what the existing conditions are here, and whether it's in terms of the, the quality of the built environment, the transportation conditions, demographics, the, the state of the economy here, and what are the, what are the trends the, the community's going to be facing. And from there, moving forward to identify, what are the opportunities for the community in the future, as we're looking to the next twenty or so years? How can we build on what we're hearing from the people who live here and what we're finding from our analysis to identify strategies and different priorities for the community to make strategic decisions and priority investments here, which is the, the job of council? And, and we really want to go through this process of re-engaging the community so that we're building consensus around what that direction is. It's a shared vision that everybody can get behind and understand, this is the direction that we're choosing to go to, and from there we develop recommendations. So at a, at a very high level, we ask ourselves a few questions when we set out to undertake a planning process like this, a long-range planning process. We want to think about how we can make decisions that provide for the most efficient services for residents and businesses in the community, how can the community remain economically competitive in the future, and what can we do to improve and sustain the quality of life here? And these, these elements you see here with this star icon, you know, these are sort of the traditional things that you see in a comprehensive plan, and all of those are going to be dealt with as part of this process, but everything under the lens of how we answer these big broad questions about what the future of the community is. And what we're really trying to do is to make recommendations that guide the, the physical aspects, the community development aspect, the economic development aspects of, of the larger community of Shakopee, under these broad set of objectives, whether it's informing specific public policies, it's guiding specific land use and development decisions, infrastructure investment decisions, and the like. So I'll share briefly some of the community engagement and data analysis that we've undertaken. There's been a wide variety of opportunities for citizens to be involved in this process, starting in the summer when we first came here and had a series of stakeholder folk, focus group interviews to get to know different organizations and people within the community, the community visioning workshop that we had back in October, online engagement coupled with that workshop, staff's been out in the street at the community events, like Rhythm on the Rail engaging people as part of this process, conversations with you, the members of council, through surveys, employer surveys, the, the National Citizen Survey that was undertaken a couple of years ago, all those things have been consulted to, to really provide a robust foundation of engagement. And this is really important because we want to ensure that the plan meets the, the needs and desires of the community that will build support for implementation, again, moving in the shared direction and vision that everybody can get behind, and so that really happens through going out and conversing with the residents of the community at the beginning stage of the process. And likewise, us understanding what the conditions are on the ground today, we want to establish a good foundation of those existing conditions, so we have a baseline for where the community's at now and where it may be headed in the future, so the US Council can make sound decisions from a policy and investment perspective. So we've looked at things like demographics and population trends, housing conditions in the community, the state of the economy, the workforce here, transportation conditions, the, the quality of your park system and trail connections and the like. And a few key data points that I'll touch on here, we went into more detail on a wide variety of those topics at the first public workshop, and I will direct anyone in the community to vision, to visit the Envision Shakopee website, envisionshakopee.com, and you can review that entire presentation. From a, the perspective of demographics, residents and housing in the community today, Shakopee's growing older. One of the key findings that we, we've identified thus far is the, the key workforce age group, the millennials, twenty-five to thirty-four, they tend to be leaving the community while more established families are, are growing, and, and it's not just that millennials are leaving the community, but it can be a little difficult for employers to retain people who may be moving to the Minneapolis region to actually stay here in the community when there are other options in terms of housing variety and, and the types of things that that age group would like to do in other parts of the, the region. That said, Shakopee's still a very well-educated community, you know, a high degree of college graduates in this community, you, you have a strong workforce here, as I'll touch on in another slide, a lot of that workforce actually leaves the community on a daily basis to go to other communities to work. Becoming more diverse, I think that's something everybody's generally aware of, with about thirty percent of the community in a non-European descent background. Still a, a strong community of families with children, you have a, a larger household size than the, the average household in the Twin Cities region, although that's likely to decrease over time with trends. And one other point I'll note, it's a little hard to see, I understand, on this graph, but this is showing the growth rate in Shakopee over the past few decades, as compared to Scott County and the Twin Cities, being, the Twin Cities being the top line. And the bright red point here is this rapid period of growth that the community has experienced since around two thousand or a couple of years after, up through about twenty fifteen. So that's been the, the real rapid period of growth, but projections show that that, that rapidity is going to level off, it's plateauing a little bit relative to the growth rate within the rest of the region, but still growth to come. As you all know, you have a strong manufacturing and warehousing sector here, it's more concentrated in that sector of the economy here in Shakopee as compared to the, the region as a whole, which is a little bit more diverse, a little bit more emphasis on the healthcare sector and the educational services sector, although you still do have a, a strong component of healthcare, as well as retail, wholesale, public administration. I'll note arts and entertainment, in terms of concentration of jobs, is not a large proportion, but the economic impact is great here from things like Valley Fair and Canterbury, those regional destinations that draw in people to the community to, to spend money. And I touched on this a slide or two ago, the majority of residents were, residents in Shakopee are working outside of Shakopee and vice versa, so about eighty percent of people who live in this community are commuting out on a daily basis, and that's why people who do sail are feeling the pain of crossing the, the bridge every morning during rush hour, and about eighty percent of employees of businesses in Shakopee are coming from outside of the community, many from Scott County, other communities in the county, but many from the surrounding area in Minneapolis and, and other communities. And that, that relationship has actually grown over the past fifteen years, so, or twenty years, so between two thousand two and two thousand fourteen, you see significant growth in the number of people that live here and work outside and vice versa. And looking forward, what we're seeing forecasts at, from a, a regional level and for Shakopee itself, through about twenty forty, about nine thousand additional households forecast based on best available information that we have today, projection of about twenty-two thousand additional residents, so potentially hitting that roughly sixty thousand population mark, and about thirteen thousand additional jobs, or getting to about thirty-two thousand overall jobs within the community, within the planning horizon of, of this period. And as we think about what those projections mean for the future of the community, we also want to think about that in the context of the way that, that trends are shaping housing and, and economy at a national level, at a regional level, so things to think about just generally, the, the population as a whole in this country is, is aging, it's becoming more diverse, there is, of course, more of an emphasis on the, the younger segment of the workforce, the millennials, and what they are looking for in communities to live and work in. Things like automation, especially in the manufacturing sector, you know, is likely to have some level of impact on workforce and education, automation's likely to have impacts on mobility and transportation systems as well, and those are things, as we think about what the opportunities are for Shakopee, we want to think about that context of the changing world that we live in, and, and how can this community leverage its assets to take best advantages of those changes. So with that, I want to touch on what we've identified as the emerging themes and some of the issues that have risen to the forefront through our engagement with the community. The first is, the plan must reflect our strategic, our values and be used as a strategic guide. So again, reinforcing this desire for transparent government, for a community-supported plan, for something that anybody can understand and know that this is the direction of the community, that the public investments and the decisions that, that you're all being asked to make are in line with this overall direction. Also, the, a desire for communication efforts to continually improve, this has come up over and over again, this goes back to the, the larger theme of transparent government, just a desire amongst the community to know that the decisions that are being made are, are being done in line with that, that plan, and really are being communicated in a, in a way that the average citizen can understand. There's also a desire for a sense of community and belonging, and you see this manifesting in how many people are coming downtown to spend time with their, their fellow Shakopee citizens, the success of Rhythm on the Rails. A lot of talk about maintaining the small-town character of this community, and some concerns that maybe that character is changing and could be lost in the future, but opportunities to, to get together, spend time with, with fellow citizens, making sure there are connections between neighborhoods so that everybody feels as though they're from one larger community. Getting a little more specifically into some of the aspects of the built environment, transportation options are a really critical component of what we're hearing from the community, definitely crossing once the one sixty-nine bridge, the, the concern with sitting in traffic and that, that's continually getting worse, and a desire to find ways to alleviate that congestion, but also on a day-to-day basis, getting around the community, especially, so Safe Routes to Schools was on the agenda this evening, and that's something that's come up quite a bit, making sure that some of the key corridors that may not be really easy for schoolchildren to walk to school even though they live nearby, or to walk to a park, those types of things, a desire for improvements to, to really improve the quality of life in the community. And that's backed up by the, some of the analysis that we've found, definitely in terms of the one sixty-nine crossing, you know, that, that bridge does essentially get to capacity on, on a daily basis. A desire for additional park and trail connections, specifically better access into the park system, and what we've found is, although Shakopee is really benefiting from a large amount of public parkland, there's a, a lot of park space in fairly close proximity to where people are living, but there often are gaps and barriers that make it difficult for people actually to, to get to some of that parkland, especially along the river front, and, and there's been quite a, a desire expressed to get better access to the river. Also, a lot of discussion in our engagement with the community about the overall look and aesthetics of Shakopee, whether it's the quality of the, the public realm, or in architecture and design of private development, you know, some of that may relate to, to code enforcement efforts, some of it may relate to design standards, especially as new developments happen. Also, I, I noted this already, a desire for downtown revitalization, there's been a lot of excitement with the activity going on in downtown, a couple of new businesses, again, people coming downtown for community events, our understanding is over fifteen thousand people have come downtown just over the course of the past year to the various community events, which is phenomenal, so there, there's clearly a popularity of downtown. We just had dinner downtown and were amazed to see on a Tuesday night, you know, all, all the cars downtown and, and people going out to the restaurants that are there and frequenting some of the businesses. Probably no surprise, there's been a lot of discussion of housing and, and a desire for improved availability of quality housing options, it's a community need that we've heard time and again, and, and really a recognition that there's this synergy between housing and jobs and the various amenities within the community, that there's a need for a balance. And what we found is the, the average household size in Shakopee is greater than that in the region I mentioned, but will shrink over time. As I mentioned, the population has grown significantly in the past fifteen or so years, but the housing options have not grown concurrently with that rise in population growth, so we're seeing strains in the, the residential market here. And finally, we must maintain a strong and diverse autonomy in, in the community. A lot of desire amongst people that we've engaged to see more of a balance in the types of employment that are, are offered here, desire for more high-tech or white-collar jobs, really to cater to people that, that live in the community, to have options to live here and to work here. Certainly, there will never be a case where everybody that lives in the community can stay here every day and work, but to, to find more of a balance, and, and that relates back to transportation and really highlights the interconnectedness of, of many of these themes. And I, I touched on some of these points already in terms of the, the data that, that we understand, how the, the commuting patterns are, are playing out, and that's creating some of those, those strains on a daily basis that impact quality of life for people that live here. So I, and I should have mentioned this earlier, I'm happy to take any comments or questions if anything that I've gone through here you have a question about. I only have a couple of more slides and then we'll open up to questions, and we can certainly revisit any slides, but going back to this graphic that I shared earlier, building on this, the community input, the engagement that we've done, the data analysis that we've done, what we're doing now is moving forward to identify, what are the opportunities, what are the different strategies that, that we can present for the community's consideration, for council's consideration, to actually address some of those issues within those themes that, that we've identified. So that's what we'll be testing at the next public workshop. So that's what we'll be testing at the next public workshop at the end of January, and getting more feedback, and then really developing that actual plan document, that, that final product that lays out all, all of the recommendations and the roadmap for implementation. And what we'll see i- is those recommendations will fall in, generally into these, these five large buckets of the built environment, the economic environment, community environment, natural environment and governance. So here's where we see all of those more traditional elements of the comprehensive plan, what you might consider as a chapter in a document, and right now, your comprehensive plan is a, a big fat stack of papers, different chapters that were produced at different times, and what we'll be doing is synthesizing all of these topics into one document. And just to put a, a cap on all of these things that we've been hearing thus far, the engagement that we've worked with staff to, to get some more feedback from all of you, members of council with the recent survey, thank you all for taking part in that, we asked you about your vision for the, the future of the community, what legacies would you like to leave here, principles, outcomes, measures of success, and this is a, a very high-level summary of s- some of the things that we've heard from you, trying to look for where are those points of consensus, or, or the, the priorities of various members of council, and we see a lot of, a lot of synergy actually with the things that we've been hearing from the community, a desire for a financially secure and fiscally responsible government, creating that balance of jobs and housing in the community, being a great safe place to live with a high quality of life, improving infrastructure, facilities, quality levels of service, and doing all of that at good value to taxpayers, so being good fiscal stewards as you're making decisions, being transparent, collaborative, making those decisions in a strategic way. Those are all things that I, we found that interesting, that those are, are themes that are reinforced in what we've heard from the community, and, and we're hearing that from you as well, and that's really important because as we move forward and, and delve into some of those opportunities and strategies, this is sort of the prism that we'll, we'll be thinking about those recommendations, how do they meet these objectives from the community and from council?
Is that, just one question back on the back slide here, because we just, the council did some work in regard to the survey, and then it's pretty much matching the community, do, did that come as a surprise, or do you think, do you think that's a commonality?
I would say, I don't think it's a surprise, it, every community differs, but you're all representing various facets and aspects of the community, so even if there are certain priorities that are more important to one person than another, you know, that, those things, there are shared commonalities amongst those various aspects, and, and I think that's reflective of the community at large. And really, that's, that's the last slide I had, except for this one, advertising the next community workshop, I want to invite everybody in the community, please come attend that if you can, January thirtieth, at the, the Community Center at six-thirty P M, where we'll be taking these themes and advancing them with some, some ideas, some questions for the community about what the, the direction should be moving forward with a little more specificity. So we encourage people to come to that meeting, as always, we'll have opportunities online for engagement for those who aren't able to come as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can we get a copy of that presentation?
This one?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Good.
Other questions? I think with the public's input and the council and other opportunity, there's been numerous online situations, staff has done a great job of trying to get this closer and pulling it together as we move to actually a year from now when we're going to submit our plans, so, great. I was interested in how the council views versus the, the residents, and when I took that survey, okay, I'm a councilperson, but also I'm a long-term resident here as well, how do, are my thoughts different, or are they the same? Obviously fiscal responsibility rose a little higher because I sit on the council, but I think it would be a comment that I'd want if I was a resident, the same sort of thing. So that's why I asked you that one question about that. Counselor Lewis?
Do you see more or less resident participation in other cities?
Every community is different, and it, it often depends on the type of project, it is very often difficult with a comprehensive plan, a long-range plan, it's, it's hard for people to think that far out in the future oftentimes. I think the level of engagement that we've had here through the wide variety of opportunities i- has given us more touchpoints with more people than we tend to see for comprehensive plans in other communities.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
When I, when I read the instructions for the council member survey, I, I read it about four times, and then I gave it to somebody else to read to see if I was reading it correctly, because the way I understood it, it was asking me to rate on one side how important, by number, I thought it was, and then on the other side it was asking, I don't have it in front of me, but, but the way it was worded, I think it was, it was asking me the opposite of what I initially thought it was asking me. You don't happen to have that handy, do you?
I don't have it right in front of me.
It said so.
But I, I do, I understand what you're referring to in terms of the rank.
Normally, normally it'd say, rank these in your, you know, which one is most important to you, one, two, three, four, five, but it was actually asking the opposite, the way it was wording.
Are, are you concerned that maybe?
I'm concerned that maybe the way the, the comments came across are exactly the opposite of what the intention was, so we'll have to go over that and make sure.
Sure, sure, we can follow up and, and make sure that we're accurately reflecting, yeah.
And what, we're going to continue as a council or as residents, we're going to still have plenty of opportunity to offer input and, a- as we try to dial this down a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I'll also say, I, I know, Counselor Lehman, I know, we understand what you're referring to, a number of these items were pulled not just from the numeric responses, but from the open-ended actual responses, the, the types of things that, that you actually wrote out in terms of priorities and, and, and principles as well, so it's a combination of those things, but happy to follow up with you and make sure that we're accurately reflecting what you wanted to convey.
Other comments, question, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we haven't touched on, but from a, a, from a behind-the-scenes type of view, it's always great to see several data points intersect, and you'll recall that we had a very extensive survey that was given to the public a little over, a little under two years ago. That survey mirrors kind of what we're seeing here in our public outreach, which means that, you know, this is all valid stuff, so that, you know, that, that is a very heartwarming, from a policy standpoint, policy wonkish type of thing, to, to be able to see that, you know, we're on the right track for the, the community.
Okay, great. Counselor Lewis? Yeah, I also had a little trouble deciphering what you really were asking, and I really, I, I didn't fill it out, my, my major comment is, you know, we're on a good path the way we are, as long as we don't veer off in the weeds any one place, I think we're going to be fine, and just keep the ship going in the direction it's going. So, I mean, we, we, everything you add on your, the screen here is things that we've been working on for years.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, great. If there's no other questions, thank you very much for that update.
Thank you.
We will see you again January thirtieth at our Community Center at six-thirty, the public is welcome, please come, offer your input.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving ahead then, to item number eight B two, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Entertainment Land Use, and Michael will present, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, let's get this to work. So Mayor and Council, we're here tonight for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment for definition of the entertainment land use in the current twenty-thirty comprehensive plan. The map that's up on the screen shows the two areas this will impact, the uppermost area is Valley Fair, the other area is Canterbury. You can see that the entertainment zone covers a, a larger area than actually that Canterbury owns, so it includes things like Seagate and the hotel and the McDonald's that are there. So why are we here, Canterbury Development LLC submitted an E A W, which you all approved a while ago for the redevelopment of a portion of its property, the Met Council identified at the time there was not an adequate definition actually for the entertainment land use, and asked the city for an amendment that updates the definition. So Canterbury has changed over time, and what was once an isolated piece of land dedicated to horses is now the center of the community, and it's become very urbanized, Canterbury wants to integrate its property into the community and develop a more compatible land uses, and they're calling this the urbanization of their campus. So this was pre-Canterbury nineteen eighty, you can see it was basically farm fields out in this area, nineteen eighty-seven was the construction of Canterbury still, it was pretty isolated, and then along came the construction of one sixty-nine, and what was once the front of Canterbury is now the, the back entrance is now their front entrance because of the highway, so this is about nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-six, and you can see in this photo, this area's becoming pretty dense, and then you have Canterbury still sitting here in the middle. This is the area today, the Canterbury Distribution Center is right here, you have Amazon's major distribution center here, the Addison Apartments, Emerald Lane Housing Subdivision, Seagate's offices here, Entrust Data Cards right over here, the Dean Lake Subdivision, so they again are four hundred some odd acres basically, sitting in the center of the city waiting to be redeveloped. So you've seen this before a couple of times, but their concepts to create a new place to live, stay, work and play, apartments by the Doran Company, upscale townhomes, fifty-five and older housing development, and then these are the townhomes, and this is their current redevelopment master plan, as you've heard, this is not fixed, but this is basically what they're aspiring to. The entertainment land use really just dealt with the, the racetrack, and so what we've tried to do is expand that to include everything that's currently going on in Canterbury and items that could occur at Canterbury. And this is the residential portion, we've settled on a certain percentage, and that's basically this area over here, which would be townhouses, higher-density luxury apartments and senior housing over here, and this is a potential corporate headquarters down here. This was the piece that was submitted to all the various agencies, the Met Council's part of the E A W, and also with the description of the future land use that could occur at Canterbury. And again, this road is actually shown in the current twenty-thirty comprehensive plan. I won't read all this because you have it in front of you already, but basically, there's three sections to the entertainment land use designation, it basically applies to the two areas I've described, that both of the areas are maturing, and that this would be the definition, that the land uses could include restaurants, hospitality, entertainment, office, office tech, office flex, medical, retail, commercial, recreation uses, a limited amount of medium and high-density residential would be allowed with an approved P U D, not to exceed ten percent of the designated land guided for entertainment with a maximum density of twenty-eight units per acre. So quickly, the medium and high-density residential will be allowed to maximum twenty-eight units, so that's two hundred, there's approximately two hundred and fifty acres of Valley Fair, so they would have twenty-five acres, there's approximately four hundred and fifty acres at Canterbury, so they would have a maximum of forty-five acres in residential. So again, all that's on the discussion tonight is a land use amendment, all of the other plans would come back through the planning commission and through the P U D process. People have asked, why are people interested in new market rate housing in Shakopee, I think you heard from the consultants from M K S K, we had a seventeen point, seventeen point eight percent increase in twenty seventeen, the highest rental rate increase in the Twin Cities, because it's a supply and demand, basically right now, we just don't have enough supply. People who can't afford the two dollars and sixty cents a square foot in Minneapolis, Shakopee's attractive, we're at about a dollar seventy a square foot right now, so an eight-hundred square foot new apartment in Shakopee's about thirteen hundred and sixty dollars a month, and you can see in Minneapolis, it'd be well over two thousand dollars. Also, you've heard is that millennials don't have that twenty percent down for the average two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollar house here, we've also heard through the process, a lot of older people are downsizing and moving out of their single-family homes, and right now, they really don't have a choice, and they're actually leaving the community, so if you saw the projected demographics, we're losing two sets of the population over time, we're losing the millennials right now, and the population's aging, and the older population, which are typically those over eighty, have no place to go right now if they want to downsize out of their single-family home. And then again, people that are getting divorced, people seeking mobility, and then there is a whole new section in this country of people who no longer want to own, because they like to rent, there's no maintenance, they have mobility, they like all the amenities, I think you're going to see, the tax bill which was just passed, basically is going to change the dynamic in this country for homeownership by capping the maximum deduction, you're going to see people now evaluating their homeownership basically not as an investment, but as a place where they want to live, and particularly the younger people, really enjoy that mobility and aren't going to be taking advantage anymore of that tax advantage, and so there will be a much larger portion in the country in Shakopee renting. So the criteria for granting the amendment, the City Council may grant a Comprehensive Plan Amendment when it finds that one or more of the following criteria exists, so one is the original zoning ordinance is in error, we don't believe that's true, significant changes in community goals and policies have taken place, I think you can see that that is occurring, significant changes in citywide or neighborhood development patterns have occurred, I think you can see from the photos, that Canterbury has changed a lot, and the Comprehensive Plan requires a different provision, which is what the Met Council has requested. Happy to answer any questions?
So, thank you very much for that overview, and this is a, a comp plan amendment to follow the process through the E W, and when we think of a comp plan amendment, we have to follow this criteria here for that void of development, even though that we've seen some plans from that, but it's a strict criteria, if I lived in Hopkins or Edina and wanted to do a comp plan amendment, I'd follow the same criteria, correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct, so this, all you're looking at tonight is purely a change in the land use language, there is no project that's getting approved tonight, it's being driven on the backside by the fact that the Met Council asked for the changes, but I think that this is just a change, you heard earlier, Mr. Noble mentioned the piece we're annexing in, that'll have to be reguided and rezoned, that's what happens on all of the property that you see, we did that recently, and actually, the city-owned piece of property where we had annexed a piece in, it had to be reguided and rezoned. So on this, we're basically asking to define what entertainment land use is, it was not well-defined at all in the twenty-thirty comp plan, and shame on the city, but shame on the Met Council for not catching that either, and so they've asked for us to clean that up.
Counselor Whitey?
You mentioned the, the entertainment, major recreation, major entertainment zoning.
There, there's two different things, there's a major recreation zone, there is an entertainment land use, the only two pieces that have that guiding are Canterbury, the larger area, and Valley Fair.
Is this type of entertainment, is that pretty unique to Shakopee, or is that anywhere else that we know of?
Mayor and Council, yes, we are blessed to have two major recreational amenities in the city, most cities don't really have that, you have Bloomington, which has the big mall, but it's not really entertainment, that's a center of commerce, and the entertainment there's just kind of in the inside, Canterbury's a little unusual because it was built originally as a horse track.
Right, but there's not, I mean, this is very unique in this state, this type of language for zoning and, and the comp plan for the entertainment area.
So, Mayor and Council, you'll see some major rec for things like stadiums, that's from a zoning standpoint, but we have two very large facilities here, if you look at four hundred and some odd acres at Canterbury, that's a large piece, if you look at a stadium in downtown Minneapolis, it's like a ten or twelve acres, I mean, this is a, you can see from the photographs, it's still a pretty large vacant piece of land in the midst of a lot of development.
I just want to follow up on the, the land use aspect to get a, a comp plan amendment, it has to follow the criteria, so then we are better defining the major entertainment zone definition, and we're adding high-density housing that is limited to ten percent and twenty-eight units an acre, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct, so we tried to be on this amendment a little bit more exacting than you would be on a typical comp plan amendment, because a lot of things have occurred over time, particularly around Canterbury, so that's why we've included things like restaurants and hospitality, along with office and office tech and office flex and medical and retail, because that area has changed, and there are things that are... Because that area has changed and there are things that are, clearly the Seagate facility does not really fit into the standard entertainment. So we tried to, we tried to create a land use category that would cover just about everything that's occurring there.
But the, the hotel on the corner of eighty-three and Twelfth Avenue is not in the zone.
Mayor, it is. If you look at the larger map, if I can bear with me two seconds. So all of the things that are in kind of this salmon color over here, where it says the word entertainment, that is all the entertainment land use.
What my question is, I'm trying to help the public understand that this is an amendment to add higher density housing. What else are we adding? Hotels are already in there, but it's, we're defining it now, correct?
Correct. We are adding in, if you look at the language, land uses include restaurants, hospitality, entertainment, office, office tech, office flex, medical, retail, commercial, recreational uses. So things like a bowling alley or other things that would not fit your standard entertainment zone as it was originally written, would be able to fit in here. If they wanted to do a some kind of performance theater or a movie theater would now fit in.
Culture Whiting?
On the, the twenty-eight dwelling units per acre, where does that fit in on our zoning, R three, R four?
That is less than the standard R four. And so they would be capped in this land use at twenty-eight units an acre. R four can go up to forty. So further down the road, you remember, this is a PUD. It's not hard zone. It's the major recreation zone with a PUD overlay on that. So you would see all those projects. And again, they have to meet a higher standard of design by statute being in a PUD. So this would cap them at twenty, twenty-eight units per acre for, if you look at the this little map, this basically is the maximum amount of housing they can have.
Culture Lehman?
When Counselor Whiting asked about our R four, our land guiding is high density, medium density, and low density. Our zoning classifications would be R three, R four, both of which fall into the high density classification. The, the R four, my understanding, only allows forty units per acre in a downtown area.
Or if it's, can be close to that, if it's near, if it meets all the other criteria, the transportation hub. So downtown, you can get the highest density of forty. Most of the projects you've seen and have been approved are in the twenty-four, twenty-three units an acre.
Other questions, comments, or staff?
And just to clarify, the Met Council has, based on the Southbridge Apartments and the Hy-Vee Apartments, those ended up getting comp plan amendments and they range, they define their high density as fourteen to twenty-eight units an acre.
Mr. Reynolds?
Michael, can you go back to the slide that had the red, talking about the seventeen point two five percent increase, I believe it was? Seventeen point eight percent increase. I look at this and I see what's driving this. And from my perspective, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this appears to be market forces at work. Is that correct?
Mayor and council, yes. I mean, I think that when we're measured, we're measured against the entire Twin Cities. And so we had the highest increase for rental apartments. And so what we're seeing is a squeeze. So it's a supply and demand issue. There's no supply right now. And so you're seeing through the comprehensive plan, we've heard people are getting nine month, nine month leases because at the end of nine months, they want to be able to raise their rent again. Because that's how tight the market is right now. Thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
Did I hear you correct saying that our high density is fourteen to twenty-eight?
Mayor and council, the Met Council, when they looked at land use.
That's their rating, not ours.
That was what, through your rezonings, they wrote a letter back to us saying, based on the rezonings that have occurred for the R four, they have changed the comp plan because there were amendments to the comp plan done as part of that. And so they sent us a letter back saying, we now look at high density in Shakopee as fourteen to twenty-eight units.
Our, our current adopted comprehensive plan land use tables say high density is R three, eight to fourteen with a PUD. That's what it currently says.
Mayor and council, but what has happened, as you do approve the project, you also approve comp plan amendments. So the Southbridge project is a higher density than it's in the current comp plan. Therefore, you did a land use comp plan amendment for that site to allow the higher density. Same is true at Hy-Vee. That had a higher density land use amendment that was approved by the Met Council. So this, the difference here is definition is basically non-existent. So you're setting for the entertainment land uses a density not to exceed twenty-eight units an acre and not to be more than ten percent of the land in those two areas.
I have a follow-up question.
More, yeah?
So let's see, that would be twelve hundred and sixty units. What happens to the zoning text amendment from July fifth of the major recreation of twenty, up to twenty percent at forty units per acre?
So mayor and council, this would supersede that. So we would go back, as the project comes forward, we would amend the PUD overlay that's on Canterbury, for instance, and limit them to whatever's in the comprehensive plan.
And this is the same style of process of the comp plan amendment that we did in the Southbridge project?
Mayor and council, that's correct.
And their, okay, and their density is roughly about the same? I don't know if we cap that like this proposal.
Mayor and council, it's not capped and they're at three hundred and thirty units right now.
Okay.
Other questions? Counselor Walker?
Yes. And what is the density of the Addison Apartments, which would be adjacent to this property?
That was before my time, eighteen units an acre. And I think when you reach these kind of densities, it drives basically some kind of parking solution. So underground parking and/or a parking deck.
So more questions of staff? More questions of staff? This is not a public hearing, but there are two letters on the table, I believe we've been emailed. Counselor Lewis?
Could you put up the slide that highlights the area that we're speaking of? No, the one that just highlights that portion where, there you go. There you go. The highlighted portion, can you give me a general estimate on how many acres are in that?
Mayor and council, this is about, including the ponding, is about forty-five acres. So basically this would, if you look at the larger plan, there is no other housing shown on the rest of the plan. So this would limit them, if they were to follow through on this particular plan. I mean, this is a land use amendment. This is their plan. If this developer were to walk tomorrow and make, would come back for a PUD amendment, they would have to show a different thing. But currently, their plan shows all the housing up against the current housing project.
And if they develop that whole area into housing, would be the maximum they could develop?
Twelve sixty, forty-five acres at twenty-eight.
Mayor and council, yeah, their current plan is their higher density pieces here. This is medium density and I believe the senior would be higher density. So these are townhouses over here. So it's a lower density.
There would be some buffers on either side.
Correct.
Yeah, but it's where the, where the, the blue would be a office flex. Could that go residential? But it's, you know, looks at office, office flex here, which is part of the better definition that we're dialing down in.
But it could go residential because it's within the ten percent.
It's forty-five acres, which basically is about this area.
Not all of the L?
No.
Correct. Okay.
And when they, mayor and council, when they did the EAW, they calculated residential only in these areas. So the rest of it was calculated at commercial. So that would require a new EAW if they were to change that. And they would be over their acreage anyway.
More questions of staff? More questions of staff? Do we want to talk about the criteria that we must use to, when we do a comp plan update? Very similar to the, the comp plan update that we did for the Southbridge project in discussing. I mean, this, some of, some of you have been on the council for a while. Anytime there's not, we haven't had a lot of comp plans updates over the years. But the criteria is a metro-wide standard that must be applied to doing this. Culture Whiting?
You know, if you look at the criteria under A, where it says the original zoning ordinance is an error, I don't see it as an error. But when you talk about that recreation or major entertainment zoning, it, it's pretty broad and it doesn't fit what, what, what this has grown into. Over the years, it's changed. It's a, it didn't develop like they thought it did. So I won't say it's an error, but I say maybe that, that zoning is, is a bit sketchy, I guess, I'd miss. But significant changes in the community goals and policies have taken place. I think that, that's an obvious statement with some of the things we're looking at. Even at, as, as the highway came through and now that the back of the park is now the front of the park, I can see that is part of that statement too. And also with C on that same comment, the significant changes in the citywide and neighborhood development patterns have obviously changed. So I, I don't see any issues here with this criteria, at least B and C. And possibly D too, because we don't have the residential component in that, in that criteria. So I think B, C, and D definitely apply.
Michael?
Mayor and council, I just checked with Canterbury, the current plan that Councilmember Lewis talked about. If I can get it to come back up. So that currently showing about nine hundred units total.
The townhomes?
Townhomes are at just less than a hundred. There are just over six hundred units in the market rate apartments and they're at about a hundred and fifty units in the elderly.
We want to make more comment on the criteria at all? Do you want, did you want to hear more from Canterbury?
I know we've, we've talked to Canterbury a couple of times. I think we all understand the plan here. Mr. Mayor, maybe if they have something to say or would like to speak?
Would Canterbury and/or their representative like to come forward and make comment on the plan, or the comp plan amendment? This is not a public hearing, but if you could state your name and address for the record, it'd be much appreciated.
Randy Sampson. I am the CEO of Canterbury Park. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, you know, I, I could make some comments, but I, I, you know, there isn't a lot that needs to be added here. I, I do want to at least mention that, you know, this, this has been a process that we've been working on for quite a while. It started in, back in July with the first comp plan amendment going to the planning commission and, and got unanimous approval. And, you know, there had been since then, as you, as you recall, a work session where there was some concerns raised, some questions from the council about the language and that, you know, we've now addressed that. We've also had the opportunity to provide, you know, our vision for this development. And so I won't go into that. We had a, you know, a work session and a, and a nice discussion about that. I would certainly, I like the intro we got tonight with the twenty forty comp plan because I believe, you know, we certainly check a lot of the boxes in what was, what was talked about there for that, that proposal. So, or for the, for that comp plan, I think our, our vision fits very nicely with that. I do want to thank, you know, also, well, I'll thank all of the supporters that came tonight. I appreciate people showing up on holiday week and, and the, in the winter to come and, and show their support. I also want to thank the council members. We've had an opportunity over the past months, you know, for Canterbury and Doran to meet individually with council members to address questions. You know, a number of the council members, Councilman Lewis in particular, have, have taken a, you know, a very serious look at this proposal, visiting some of the Doran properties and, and going over our plans. And so this is an important, you know, I believe a very important redevelopment project for Shakopee. And I very much appreciate the thoughtful consideration that all of the council members have, have given us. And so, you know, I guess I'll conclude my comments by saying that, you know, this, this is about the comprehensive plan and it's not about Canterbury's vision. The comprehensive plan is the city's vision for, and so, you know, tonight, we're here to find out, you, you know, what our vision is. And, and we hope that the council and the city share our vision. We believe we've got a, you know, a really exciting opportunity to, as you've seen, to create Canterbury Commons, a great unique opportunity to create a, you know, really unique development that will be a gateway to, you know, to the center of the community. And, and we certainly hope that we can move forward tonight and, and continue the dialogue with the approval process. And, you know, again, we're not here to talk about the specific proposal tonight, but the comp plan amendment, which again is your comp plan amendment and your vision for, for Canterbury and, and our land. We have a, a really qualified development partner in Doran. You've seen some of the stuff that they've, you know, their, their plans for this development. It'll be a fantastic asset to the community. It'll be the, you know, in my opinion, the best rental residential community south of the river. And, and they're a fantastic developer that we're excited to be working with. And, and they're ready to invest a hundred million dollars in this community. And by their, their budgets, they're showing taxes, annual taxes at full implementation, full development of almost two million dollars a year. And so we've got a great developer that wants to work with us and invest in this city. And, and I certainly hope that we get the opportunity to do that. So with that, Mr. Mayor and council, I'll answer any questions. Otherwise, again, thank you for your consideration of this issue tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Sampson? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Doran Companies and Mr. Sampson personally for being as open as they were. He sat through a number of meetings with me and answered every question I had. Same with Doran Companies and Mr. Keakley with Doran Companies. I called him a few times and he was very prompt with returning phone calls. So I think you, you guys did what you needed to do and everybody's happy.
Thank you.
Mr. Sampson, thank you for bringing us to this point. I want to thank you, your organization, for being a strong employer in our community. You've been a good corporate partner in our community. I've watched the track for a long time. And this is a unique opportunity for Canterbury as well as the greater of Shakopee. So I'm, I'm glad we're here at this point tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I, you know, I, I was going back looking through the history of the entertainment land use. And I don't, I don't believe it was an error. I actually, if you look at the current comp plan, I think the intent going back over the thirty years is that people before us and before them recognize that the housing uses aren't just, are not compatible uses to the other kind of uses on the site. And what we're trying to do now is say, well, now housing next to these kind of uses are, are now compatible. Okay? And the conditional use permit on the site for the entertainment, going back to its inception, was, was worded extremely loose for, for a lot of reasons, so that they could do a lot of different things out there that other properties can't do. You know, they can have all kinds of onsite outside storage and, 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 you know, all these things that they do out there. Motorcycle racing and snow, snow crosses and things like that, concerts, whatever. Residential isn't that type of use. You know, and what we're trying to do is make residential uses a part of an existing PUD that was drafted for this other kind of more aggressive type use, I guess. The EAW comments from the Met Council talked about multiple ways of, one way is to just flat out re-guide a piece of property for residential and have it have, have its own PUD. PUD, if they wanted to go a PUD route, on that new land guiding. And then take anything that might be new development, which anything south of Twelfth Avenue is, is pretty much raw land. It's, it's new development, not redevelopment. Anything along that property that's not a, a current accessory use in their current PUD would have to be a standalone new development, you know? So there's two different ways. You could either develop that commercial portion of it under your existing PUD with the, with the, there's benefits to doing that for the landowner, but there's also restrictions and that's something they would have to weigh out, in my mind. But I don't like the fact that we're, we're trying to, by doing this action, we're putting, we're basically telling Valley Fair to redevelop into high density residential and I would prefer Valley Fair stays an amusement park for the rest of my life.
Well, they have housing already.
Well, that was part of when they developed under their PUD for onsite workforce housing.
And they have, under the current major recreation zone, they have uses that they have chosen not to use.
Mm-hmm.
They, they could. This is trying to define those uses as well as adding residential. Obviously, they, they currently have residential. I think that when we look at Canterbury back in the eighties, it had a zone of the racetrack district and it, it covered all their land and it was supposed to be auxiliary businesses, tack shops, horses, saddle shops, et cetera. And, you know, for, for a while there, that, that didn't spur any development under that zoning thing. When we talk about criteria one A here, I, I struggle too with whether it was in error. I think at the, at the time, in the mid-eighties, I think the best planners in the metro area were looking at and trying to define in the city what, what that use should look like, the racetrack district. It didn't develop. And then we made a change and we called it the major recreation zone and we made, we added some things. Some of that, some of that has been added as, as activities, but that the land hasn't developed. And now we bring to today about a comp plan amendment to add housing. To me, this is a long-term land use issue. We have had thirty years with two different zoning classification or definitions that haven't brought that land to the fullest potential. I think we're following the process through the EAW. Now we have an opportunity to, to aid development on these vast acres. The last two methodologies of comp plan zoning haven't worked, so I, I struggle to say one A is in error. It was the best zoning at the time, same with the last update. However, long-term vision does change to adapt to the changing needs of an area and a community. Look around the metro area, much has changed or even across our nation. It, it has changed and will change again. Rigid stagnation is not always the best. And Counselor Lehman, you bring up that back then, housing wasn't going to be next to that use and that was the methodology back then. But let's look at some of the other major zones around. We brought up the Mall America, lots of housing around there. You go to different communities and they're right in their downtowns or where the action is. Let's take a look in a metro area where in Minneapolis, much bigger city obviously, but let's look at impacts. The new Twin Stadium, you want to talk about one of the major growth items in housing is in the North Loop. Talk about the new stadium, US Bank Stadium. It did not occur in the eighties with the old Metrodome that you would have gotten housing, but it's not the eighties anymore. It's two thousand seventeen. The hottest housing market in Minneapolis is right next to that stadium. People want to be next to the action where years ago it was no. I, I believe that, that the changes occurred and that housing would be an okay use next to a major entertainment aspect. When we look at that criteria, go down, I do believe our community's goals and policies have changed. I also believe significant changes in the community-wide and neighborhood development have occurred and we could get out those maps again of Canterbury, people say out in the middle of nowhere, back in the mid-eighties with no development around it. Now you look at it, it's business, commercial, and also to the west, we do have housing and we have dense housing with the Addisons, we have some townhomes there. I've been on the, I was on the planning commission for ten years and that the city actually has grown around Canterbury, yet within Canterbury, not much has happened. I believe it is time to unlock Canterbury, Canterbury's full potential for the betterment of our community. And those are some of my comments for now. And Mr. Reynolds, did you have one to add?
Yeah, just really quickly, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make sure that we're clear that this doesn't require anybody to do anything. It provides options for landowners to develop their property within a set, a certain set of guidelines. So Valley Fair can continue to be a, a, a great recreation destination for the foreseeable future. We're not requiring them to become residential housing.
Yeah, cool. Other comment? Counselor Mokel?
You know, I think that we will look back at this and, and I know that Mr. Sampson and his team have been looking outward at everything that's developing around them and looking for this potential, but they're not asking to sell their property to somebody else to develop, they're asking to develop it themselves and they have been community partners here. And we, we just looked at our budget and our council goals and our council goals were to keep our taxes low, continue financial stability, and a stable tax rate, and I think this checks all those boxes, so.
Counselor Luce?
Well, this is an example of why I have a trouble with the 2040 comp plan that we're trying to work on. You know, this is, what, thirty years ago and it didn't work. You know, we're going to speculate on what's going to work in the comp plan. This is one thing that back then they said was going to work. It didn't, you know? Times have changed, you know? This is only one vote of many to come before anything is done out there. There's going to be a lot of oversight from this body and from city staff, you know, and if, what they have envisioned in that L-shaped piece, more power to them. If people want to live there that close to a major recreation center, you know, and you've already stated that that's the new, new hot item. They want to be there, they want to be where the action supposedly is. I'm, you know, I, I, I agree that we need to do something and I'd like to hear from some citizens.
Do we want to hear from citizens who come forward, make comment on this? This is Counselor Whiting?
You know, one, one major concern of mine is, is the rising rents, you know? There's a lot of people that we want to work in Shakopee and, and live in Shakopee and are priced out because of the rising rent. So I'd be interested in knowing maybe from a real estate aspect or from some rental property owners, how adding more rental properties and apartments would help this community.
Counselor Luce?
Well, as we all know, as taxes rise and taxes rise on apartment buildings, they have to recoup their money someplace. So rents are going to continue to rise, maybe not as quick, but, you know, there's nothing we can do with taxes rising, that's.
Well, I just think that it's a supply and demand situation. When we don't have it, I think, you know, the, the demand goes up and so the rents go up with it and that's, that's a concern of mine and so adding any type of more rental property to me is, is a, is a good thing.
For a few minutes here, this is not a public hearing, this is a, what if a, a resident would like to come forward and make comment on this? Kind of keep it short here and do it for fifteen minutes and then we'll get back to council discussion. Offer your input on this comp plan amendment. Yep, yes, welcome.
Jeff Smolinski, senior executive with EnTrust Data Card. Things have changed. Just a little over three years ago, I stood before this body in a much older building, didn't have all the technology you have today and asked for the help from the city to move our corporate headquarters from Minnetonka with the promise to bring six hundred and eighty high-paying jobs to Shakopee. In exchange for the help of the city, we promised to bring a hundred new jobs on top of that. The two years have now gone by, we've been there two and a half years, we've brought two hundred and fifty additional jobs, high-paying jobs with ninety percent of those being professional jobs. I'm here again to ask for your help. I have three big challenges today. Number one is called millennials. Right now, even though I hired two hundred and fifty folks, people who've been with us two years or less, we're turning them over twenty to twenty-five percent per year. Most of them are millennials. Two reasons. I have development centers in Denver, Ottawa, east coast in Boston, out in California. We attract a lot of software programmers. We bring a lot of displaced individuals who grew up in Minnesota, went out west, worked for Google and so on, want to establish families, want to come back to the Midwest. We bring them back. We bring them into Shakopee. They have no place to live. Millennials do not want to buy houses today. They want nice things, they want convenience, they want, in fact, what they do, speak to Councilman Whiting, they're paying twenty-five hundred dollars a month for an apartment in downtown Minneapolis because the action's there. The money for the rent doesn't mean nothing, they don't want to save the forty thousand dollars to commit to a long-term investment here. They want something close and convenient. What happens when they pick that though, with the unemployment rate, one point six percent right now in Shakopee, under three percent sitting Minneapolis, all they have to do right now, Minneapolis, according to some statistics, fourteenth in the country for congestion and traffic. You pick a choice to live in the convenience of downtown Minneapolis and then you get on the roads to drive down to Shakopee. Within those next twenty-four months, they find a job closer to the place that they want to live. What I don't have to offer my employees today is those places to live that's within walking distance or within a very short, non-congested drive. So for our help, a project like this and bringing in these upper level type homes and these apartment complexes, I have renters. I have people that want it and I have people that are inconvenient. Second thing, because we are a global company, we're in a hundred and seventy countries, we have a hundred and five offices around the world, many of my executives don't live here. One of my division leaders lives in Northern California, another one of our head of sales lives in Dayton. They spend a lot of time here. I have long-term housing in Bloomington or downtown because I have nothing here to offer them. These would offer us, two, three, four of these apartments would become corporate executive long-term stay apartments for us, as well as many of the other companies in the area. And the third biggest thing that would help us is I think this is the first start to really quality growth beyond housing. Right now, when I bring our board in for a meeting, we keep them in downtown of Bloomington. When I got to think about to eat, I take them to Edina or downtown. I don't have nice restaurants. We have good restaurants, we don't have nice restaurants. The problem is right now, the millennials, they spend their money. I'm, high-paying jobs, those two hundred and fifty jobs probably average over ninety-five thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a year. They're spending their money, not in Shakopee. They're spending their money when it's time to go out after work, they're running up to Crooked Pint up in Chaska because it's closer and you got parking and you can, you can go. Great place, O'Brien's downtown, no place to park. So they go, again, they want convenience. I think the start of this will then lead to, and I would hope to see the full plan, that we start getting restaurants so that our folks that we're hiring can live in the community and they can spend their money in this community. So I very much ask for your help, maybe move forward on at least amending the opportunity for somebody like Randy's team and so on to bring a project like this to Fair because I think it'll assist not only corporations like ourselves, but many of the other folks that have chosen to make Shakopee their home. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your letter that was on the table tonight. Michael?
Good evening, I'm Michael Morris, Director of Business Development at St. Francis Regional Medical Center. And I come here on behalf of our eight hundred employees and four hundred and fifty physicians on staff at the hospital, as well as our senior leadership team to ask you for approval for this comprehensive plan amendment. As Jeff Smolinski mentioned, like other large employers in the area, we recognize and realize the need for more and increased variety of housing in the community of Shakopee. Bill Reynolds was recently at our Board of Directors meeting where he talked about the very low rate of unemployment in the community. Essentially, we have a community that's fully employed. That makes it very difficult to find employees and professional employees that live and reside in the community, so they have to come in from other communities and live outside of the city of Shakopee. When we do find professional employees and physicians, they often end up living in places other than Shakopee because they don't have luxury apartments or condos or townhouses like we saw examples of tonight. Oftentimes, they end up living in places like Savage, Prior Lake, Bloomington, Edina, and Eden Prairie. That's tax revenue that we're missing out on here in the city of Shakopee. A good example of that is a fellow leader that's in administration with me at St. Francis. She's actively looking for a luxury apartment right now to relocate and live closer to work. There isn't anything that she can find and wants to live in right now in the community. Secondary to the need for housing in the community is our mission to strive to meet the healthcare needs of the community. We hear over and over from patients and residents that they want a greater depth and breadth of medical specialties in the community. In order to offer that, we need volumes and to get the volumes, we need residents and patients to utilize those healthcare services. That's something we need to do, but we can't add those services without patients here to utilize them. We are in the early stages of plans to add inpatient beds to the hospital right now or else in the very early stages of planning a ER expansion that will double the size of our emergency room to keep up with community need. We're going to have to hire additional medical professionals and physicians and we want to offer them a place to live in Shakopee rather than having them drive in from outside the community. Finally, additional housing would support continued community growth, which helps businesses grow and thrive. That's a goal we have with all of our businesses in Shakopee, both large and small. As one of Shakopee's biggest employers, we support the idea of allowing Canterbury to exercise and move forward with the plans that it has that would result from this comprehensive plan amendment. Again, as we've heard tonight, it's only ten percent of its total land size and this vote is simply to allow the community conversation to continue. It's not a final decision, it allows the conversation to continue and the information gathering process to continue. So Mayor, council members, we urge you to approve this proposal and show the state and the metro area that Shakopee is still open for business. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else like to come forward and make a quick comment on this? Please state your name and address for the record.
Kayden Fox, I live at one thirty ninth, thirteen ninety-six Blue Herring Trail. Didn't come planning to speak, but just listening to everything, I've picked up a few things. Notably, I don't know where he's sitting, but the first guy that gave a presentation, he's being paid to tell us what we need. And he told us what the second guy told us, is that we need housing. So it makes sense that regardless of who does it, it needs to be done. And can I fidget with this because there was that map? So the concern was raised about having residential near entertainment. Well, if they build on the west end, make an amphitheater or a drag strip or whatever that makes a lot of noise, it's right across the street from housing. How is that functionally different than moving the housing across the street and putting it in the complex? And then what first got my mind rolling was the mission statement at the top of this agenda. We're here to keep Shakopee safe and healthy where residents can pursue active and quality lifestyles, living on a racetrack with dinner theaters, all that sounds like an active lifestyle. Positively manage challenges and opportunities presented by growth, development, and change. Changed, we need to accommodate that change. We need housing. We can put housing here. They want to do it. Let's do that. Maintain the city's, city's strong financial health. Hundred million dollars in investment, that's a lot of financial health. Sounds good to me. Jobs, houses. Maintain and improve and create strong partnerships with other public and private sector entities. We're going to be developing roads, trails, people can walk from their job to their house. We can have more people living here. That's contributing. Deliver effective and efficient public services by a staff of oil trains and Deliver effective and efficient public services by a staff of well-trained and caring professional employees. Well, taking this one on faith, but looks like a lot of smart people here dedicated to understanding the laws and how to implement them. So you guys are doing your job to make sure this is all on board and on the level and what's best for Shakopee. And then the last bit, even housekeeping fits in because who wants to drive through Canterbury's parking lot to get from A to B? Who wants to walk on the road because there's no sidewalks? I mean, we need housekeeping, these improvements have to be made in that area, might as well do it while we're doing this. So that's all thoughts ahead, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Welcome.
Hi there, Mayor and Members of Council, my name is Jordan Olson. I live at two four nine Mound Street. There's a few things I've heard here tonight, you know, this previous gentleman's very well spoken. You know, there, there can be a lot of good things that can come out of this, but I'm actually very concerned about the density of the project itself. You know what, the Addison, I heard that got bred up earlier, it's a very big, large complex, that's R-three to my understanding, right? I mean, we're talking about people stacked on top of people stacked on top of people. I just don't know that we need so many people in one area, that's assuming that everyone's going to work there, by the way. There's going to be new jobs, but not, not everybody necessarily going to work there. What about during peak track season? There's already traffic backed up there. I understand road plans are, you know, we got that nice little avenue with the trees and whatever went along. But you know, we heard from an older gentleman here about millennials. Some of my friends are going to make fun of me for saying this, but I'm a millennial, I was born after the year nineteen eighty-four and I live here, work here and play here, I grew here my whole life. And I spend my money here, I, I work downtown and I, I live about a mile distant and I walk, I've walked thirteen years to work back and forth. Now, the point is, you know, I guess I'm a millennial and I, the thing that, another thing about adding so many, potentially so many units in one area during the same time as a school board crisis. We, we, you know, we're facing a lot of financial disparities out there, adding potentially, I don't know, even if we have a conservative estimate, maybe say three hundred new kids, the school district, depending on how many people move in there, their age, you know, and how many kids they have. I'm, I'm not entirely confident that our school district can handle such a load right now and I'm not against development, I'm just against, you know, R-four density. We're talking about densities that are downtown Minneapolis and St. Paul and I, I, I think we could go forward with something, but changing the comprehensive plan seems a little bit forward, if you ask me. Don't, don't get me wrong, I, I'm not against development, I just think there's a reason that we don't want such high density.
You're opposed to this?
I am opposed to this as current, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you guys for hearing me and Councilor Luce, stand your ground tonight, thank you for, for, you know, considering both sides of the issue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to answer one of the questions that was put there. I did have that same question with the school and I did do some checking. It's not generally trackable in any manner, but the marketing that's done on the apartments is, is more towards millennials and older people. And the numbers that I was given was about ten percent of the occupants of the apartment building will be children. Of those ten percent, only three percent will most likely be students. So that's about twenty-two kids that might join our school district.
Those are, that's good information. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll make it very brief. Kevin O'Brien, resident here in town, a business owner and owner of commercial property. And I'm here to urge you to support this amendment. I think it doesn't just affect the large businesses, it affects the medium-sized, small businesses the same way. We have seventy-five employees, high-paid construction workers and professionals. So two things, adding to that mass of tax income helps us as a commercial land and as my residential property, keep taxes low. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that, this adds to that. Number two, we as a small business find the same issues with keeping, attracting and keeping high-quality people. And housing in this community has been a very large issue for us on a much smaller scale. But when we lose two or three people for the same reason, it has a, a huge impact on our business and we've been experienced that. So I urge you to go forward with, with this project, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, we've had our fifteen minutes, I don't want to cut off anybody, but we've talked about this project for quite a while. So I'd like to start the conversation by offering to make a motion to approve Resolution seven nine five seven, a resolution approving the comprehensive plan text amendment for Entertainment Land use.
All right, thank you, Councilor Mokel.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second then. Discussion. Councilor Luce?
Well, from what my daughter told me before I came down here, the Facebook is reading this at a seventy-thirty yes. I don't know that I can go along with that, but if I do, there's going to be some heavy debates coming down the road with the rest of these votes. So that's where I'm at.
Councilor Lehman?
I think it's too high of density. I think it's a pretty big step without even so much as a transportation analysis, which was also highlighted in EA, EAW. I do have an issue with the entertainment and the residential side by side. I don't know how you, how you work through that. I know how they did it up in the cities next to the airport, they came in and they insulated all the houses so you wouldn't hear the planes. You know, I don't, I don't, I, I don't know what the answer is to that. I, I think the densities are too high, I didn't like R-four to begin with. I was pretty proud of this body when we had our discussions and compromises and consensus built on how we were going to move forward on, on R-four housing, picking out locations throughout town on five, ten acres, maybe fifteen. At that point, I, I was pretty proud and I thought we had a vision moving forward. And the first project that pops up is substantially bigger than that and, and that tells me that the vision moving forward is, whatever the project is, is what it is. And when we had our, our growth spurts that the gentleman showed us in our comprehensive plan in the past, we were doing about a thousand units per year for a couple of years on end and that was a, a national, you know, leader in a nation. And we're looking at a thousand units in one project, not including what we already have going on in town through D.R. Horton, Lennar and, and Sands Project and the Hy-Vee Apartments. You know, you start adding this all up and, you know, we're talking about three thousand units in one year. When we, when we looked at these, the workshops that we had specifically on high-density housing, there was a, a lot of developer-oriented people involved in them discussions and, and their study that they provided was thirteen hundred units were needed in five years' time. We're going to hit that thirteen hundred the very first year. So not only is there a demand now, but what happens if you oversaturate the market and have too much demand? I mean, it's kind of a balance beam here. So I have my reservations. I, you know, I've expressed them in the past and, you know, where the chips fall, they fall.
Councilor Whiting, more?
No, I think.
Councilor Mokel?
I'm good.
Councilor Luce?
The Dorn Project's going to probably take two to two and a half years for phase one to even open up. So I think, you know, the other developments that we have in town, you know, they're going to, Sand Projects is under construction. We've got the County Road sixteen project that I believe is coming open this spring and Ameristown Road Project coming open this spring. They will be well underway before this one would start renting. So I, I don't know that we're going to have that big of a glut, it's going to be a steady flow. But, you know, it, it, it's not going to be near, you know, a thousand acres a year, like, or a thousand units a year like we had there for a while. So I think that, you know, and, and I'm a big proponent of if you own the land and you're not stepping on anybody else's toes, you can do with it what you want.
Well, thank you. Further motion, a second on the table, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Lonely me.
Motion passes four to one, thank you very much. I just, I think we're going to go to recess here for a minute, but I would like to thank everybody in our community, the business community, Canterbury. I also would like to thank this council, they were very engaged in the process. Councilman Luce, I think, put in more effort than any of us, countless meetings and information. Every time I turned around, he was doing something different, something more, to learn more, so compliment on that, so.
Thank you.
With that.
Motion for a seven-minute recess?
All right. Councilor Luce?
I just want to make a comment to clarify, originally I did want to tear this apart. I tried hard, I can't find fault with it, so I had to vote yes.
Second to the motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed will stand in recess. We'll reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. We are at nine B Liaison and Administration Report. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I missed the school board meeting because I came down with an illness and so I don't have a report for that. However, I did seek medical help with the illness.
Well, thank you.
You came here and brought it here.
I also do not have a liaison report, I've spent a majority of my time in the last many weeks gathering information on the comp plan amendment and I will have a full update at our next meeting. Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, MVTA Board met on the sixth. The big concern with that is the consistent allocation of revenue. There's, there's a need for a six point two percent of the total M-Vest dollars and some of these acronyms I'll mess up, but they think they'll have adequate funding through two thousand and eighteen, but they're, they're working with some, they want the, the Ram-Vest portion of their funding to be more consistent and some sort of policy statute. And the, the Met Council's requiring so much reporting that real difficult to, they, they need a report for every kind of time they, they submit. And so what they need for all these suburban transit groups is consistent policy so that it's the same, they don't got to fight for their revenue every year. The chamber met on the thirteenth, they presented their new board members currently. This will be voted on at their annual meeting on the twenty-third of January, but currently up for election is for president would be But currently, uh, up for election is, uh, for president would be Michael Morris, he spoke tonight. Uh, VP would be Michael Clem, he used to be on our planning commission. Uh, secretary would be James Riddle, and I believe he's from Shutterfly. Uh, Shane Hoffman would be treasurer, and they have another, uh, board seat that they're working on filling. Uh, and I also attended on Friday the, the holiday breakfast with the employees. I wanna wish the employees a very Merry Christmas and happy holidays, and the citizens as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Mokel?
I had spuck yesterday. Um, underwater, it, there was no construction update, they have finished for the season. Um, homes had a leaky gate valved for about three to four hours, residents had been notified. Um, electric, there was three outages, two of them actually were in Prior Lake, and they were billed to the companies responsible. Um, it was due to construction. And the seventh was due to a goose in the overhead.
Goose?
Yep, in the overhead by S M S E, um, and that was only one customer for that outage.
Add a new category.
Yeah, I know.
Suicide duck.
And then they also did have a vehicle take out two-stop streetlights, so they will be repairing those. Um, they also presented their redesign of their front counter. Um, they are hiring another customer service rep, which will bring their total up to three, to improve the customer experience, and so they're recreating the front area for, to accommodate that. Um, and then they are also looking at changing their logo. And if you have not gone out to their Facebook page, or their web page, they now have their packets, commissioner packets available, um, are accessible to the public. Um, there's a specific place for commissioners in case there is private data, but, um, the packets are now available online. And then, um, in this next twenty eighteen, one of their goals is to go back, is to start looking into the e-billing again. Um, they had put off that project due to, um, new software that, that they were installing. And so they look at restarting that project with the goal of a summer rollout. That's all I have.
All right, Councilor Whiting?
I was meant to get over there for their LED light bulbs, did that go over very well?
Yes, it did. They said they had about a hundred and fifty people a day, so...
Good turnout. Um, Councilor Mokel, thank you. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, Administration Report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, just, uh, to let you know, I had, uh, the distinct honor of sitting down with the Temporary Acting Superintendent, John McBroom, uh, recently, uh, and talking, uh, a little bit about, uh, where they are as, as an organization, and, uh, pledged our support in whatever we could do from an administrative standpoint to help out, uh, as they continue to move forward with their, uh, uh, the hill that they have to climb. Uh, on twelve December, we had the first beers with the administrator at Badger Hill. Uh, I was, I was expecting to kinda have my rear-end shoot a little bit, because we had multiple complaints, uh, in the weeks prior about, uh, some of our trash issues, and I'll get to that in a minute, in regards to billing. Uh, but eventually, uh, it was, it was great. Uh, I went there, and, uh, everybody left happy, and I didn't know what to do with myself. That's the first time I've had a public meeting, and everyone was happy.
Where was that located?
Yeah.
I may have had something to do with it, but, uh, yeah, it was, it was, it was fun, it was great. It was great to see people, and, and again, when we have these events, and if you've got a gripe, come in, sit down, let us know, so we can fix it. That's the whole point. Uh, and, and, and wanna continue to do that. Uh, City Hall is now down on the ground. Just real quickly, if you haven't seen that, you'll see a big hole there at this point. Uh, the old City Hall, not this one.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, interesting is, is that when the, apparently when the construction equipment first went in to take the roof down, uh, it kinda crumbled. Apparently, all of the wood that was in that roof was rotted, uh, and, uh, it wasn't very stable. So, it came down a lot quicker than what they had originally anticipated that it would. Finally, some great news. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we received a lot of complaints, uh, about the increase from Republic in regards to, uh, uh, our, our, our fees that we pay for, for refuse disposal. As council knows, uh, Republic came here before us and told us why that was occurring. Uh, the reason for that was, uh, that the tipping fees for, uh, uh, in other words, the amount of money charged for when the trash is collected and actually put into some kind of facility, whether it's a dump or something else, those fees increased. Uh, not to get too far in the weeds, uh, Nate Burkett did a real great job in kind of bird-dogging this issue for the public. And he spent, uh, a good three weeks, and is still fielding phone calls on it. But, we have met with Republic, we talked to Republic, and we have a resolution to some of those charges that appear to have been billed a little early, frankly, two months early. Uh, because as it stands right now, Republic is continuing to put the trash in the same facility that they had, with the same tipping fees that they had been paying before. Well, that's not what this council was told. That was not why this council said that we're gonna bless this. So, uh, Republic is going to refund, uh, November and December's fees. Uh, and then, you will see that increase in January, as, as, as those, uh, are ultimately put in a new landfill. But, uh, uh, again, great work on Nate's behalf, uh, spent a lot of time and effort on this, uh, a lot of phone calls with residents. Uh, we're, we're gonna put this information out. Uh, we have a letter from Republic that, that, uh, basically says, "Our bad, and we'll refund you." Uh, that'll be going out, uh, probably early tomorrow, and we'll get this out, uh, in, 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 in all of our, our media, uh, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Councilor Lehman?
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir.
Republic stood at that podium, and I asked them specifically...
Yes, you did, and we brought that up to them.
I asked them specifically, "Are you putting this in everybody's bill?" And they said, "Yes."
Notification.
Yes.
Yes.
Notification of the increase and why?
Absolutely.
And, and then I...
They did not.
I asked, I said, "Well, can, can the city do the same on its website or whatever?" And everybody agreed they were gonna do this, and they didn't do it. Now, my question today is, are they gonna put it in the bill?
Yes. There is actually gonna be a letter that goes out, specifically talking about it, talking about the, the fact that they overcharged for two months, and that, uh, this will then be, uh, starting in, in January. But yes, sir, you're exactly right. I told that, and, that to them in the meeting, uh, when, uh, Mr. Burkett and I met with them, and specifically referenced your specific comments about notification. Uh, and I offered to play them the tape. I said, you know, "We can sit down and play the tape for you if you'd like," but, uh, uh, they were very, uh, and, and hats off to Republic. Once they realized that there was an issue, they were very good to work with. It took them a little while to track it down, but, uh, uh, again, if you have these kinds of issues, please contact us, because we don't know a lot of times unless somebody's telling us that there's an issue.
That's, that's great.
I fielded the same questions online, and I was like, "Wait a minute, they, they told me, they told us."
Okay. Councilor Luce, and then I'll come back.
Did I hear Mr. Reynolds say that, um, "Our bad"? I mean, that, that's not a bad on staff stuff.
No.
No, 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 I'm sorry, sir, they said that Republic said it was "our bad."
Okay.
Meaning, "their bad."
Yeah, I'm just saying that our catching it is a good thing, and the fact that they owned up to it is a good thing. And it's great that staff was able to ferret it out.
Thank you.
It's not a lot of money, but it makes us look better, at least citizens think we're doing our job.
And my, my concern, and I'll ask staff, is, is it time to revisit that contract? And, uh, I've had some talks with some citizens, and there were some concerns there. There's some other issues, uh, with some of the senior citizens and the size of the recycling and actually lugging that thing out to the curb and things. So, is it time to revisit that contract?
It's a five-year contract, and it is up next year?
It's at the end of May of twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, May of twenty nineteen, so essentially, we're, we're coming close to that, sir.
Well, great news on the garbage, and thank you all very much. Um, Councilor Lehman?
I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, season greetings, whatever works for them.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn till next year, the second.
I have a motion, and it sounded like a second. Uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Uh, we will see you next year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Our meeting is adjourned at nine sixteen.